Good evening, folks. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustments. And with that, I would like to ask if you have a cell phone, please, or a personal communications device of some sort, please put it on vibrate or whatever, so it doesn't make any noises to interrupt the meeting. With that, could we have the roll call, please?
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Suzanne Purley.
Here.
Ori Gibbs.
Here.
Steve Bogert.
Here.
And we have the Planning Director, Dean Trevethan, with us tonight. Absent are Mike Foote and Mike Delevicchia.
Everybody got a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah.
Any additions, subtractions, corrections? There being none, like to entertain a motion.
Will we accept the minutes?
A second.
We have a second discussion. There being none, all those in favor of the minutes as written. That the record indicate the vote was four zero. Extensions. We have no extensions tonight, so we're going to move right into public hearings. If anybody is here for 16 Pickrell Pond Road, that has been removed. Once again, that's 1-6 Pickrell Pond Road. All right, because that has been removed from tonight, so we're going to move right on into the next application, which is 2018-0015-61, Pickrell Pond Road. Applicant is requesting a special exception for accessory dwelling unit. Would applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you.
Good evening. My name's Bruce Cheney, and I'd ask, we have a designer who's done the work and can explain things better than I can, or at all, which I can too, to be perfectly frank. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me, but you'd be better off with Kathy, who can help you through our application.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate, yes.
Kate, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so what is it that you're trying to accomplish tonight? And let's see how we can help you. If you could tell us briefly what you're trying to do?
We're trying to...
And your name is?
Oh, I'm Kate Brewer.
Thank you.
So we're trying to take an existing garage and convert it into an accessory dwelling. I don't know how much detail you want on it. It's to accommodate a handicapped person in a wheelchair. Deb's his caregiver, he's my dad, and we're just trying to create a space he can live in, and that she is close by to take care of him.
And this is located on the, above the garage space?
No, we're actually going to convert the existing garage.
So it'll be on the first floor?
Yes, it has to be, yeah, that's, yeah. So the plan, I submitted a couple different plans, not quite knowing how much square footage we could get away with, but it's all ramped, because he's in a wheelchair full time.
Excuse me.
Yep.
She submitted a couple of different plans?
Well, there's, I don't know which plan you guys have.
That's the only plan I got.
We only have one.
Okay.
668 square feet, so that...
Okay, let's...
Was that what you're going with?
I can't, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Yeah. That's a small one and a large one.
Okay, yes, that's what we wanted to do. So is it tied into the main house at all?
So if you'll notice on the plan, as you're looking at it, with the screen porch at the top and the deck ramp down at the bottom, the left-hand side is a corridor between the existing house and what would be the main part of the dwelling, because Deb and Bruce heat with wood a lot, and all their wood is stored out on the back, so we're trying to create a way where they could still bring their wood inside, in the way that they've been doing for years. And so that whole piece, though, the front part like this, is the existing garage, as it is. So it's already connected to the house.
So it is attached?
Yeah.
It is attached, yes.
So you're not adding on to the building, you're just using what's there?
We're looking to add on a, because it's a minimal space, and I don't know, when you design for a handicapped person, you have requirements for, they can move around in a wheelchair, so it eats up a lot of square footage. You have to have a five-foot diameter circle in front of doorways, and in bathrooms, and bedrooms, and things, so it eats up a lot of square footage. And because I'm trying to leave the access point for them to bring their wood in, we're adding on a 10 by two, I forgot how long it's, 10 by 16 area onto the original building, which would be this, right here, but it keeps it within the allowed square footage.
Does that include all the porches and decks and everything?
Uh, no.
No.
I saw those, I thought the square footage was based on livable.
Okay.
Full-time livable square footage. So the screen porch and the deck, I thought, were addendums to that, not considered full-time living space.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It's kind of hard without numbers here that translate into actual distances, or whatever, to give you a concept of it.
But you can tell with the...
Well, you can tell, it's fairly reasonable.
The size of the doors and stuff, as one who had to be in a wheelchair for a while, I would tell you, that's one of the most challenging aspects of a house, is being able to move around in one.
Yeah, a lot of conventional, so the overall dimensions of the existing garage are 24 by 26. So that square footage right there is the 24 by the 26, and then this addition is 10 And I, when you're calculating the square footage, I didn't count the existing part of the garage that is basically going to stay part of their way that they can get their...
Where the wood storage?
Yes, thank you, yeah. So this area right in here, I didn't include in the square footage, because that's sort of basically staying part of their space.
But there's still the open door that goes into that area.
That's into their house, yes.
It's a separation point.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Looks like it's a double separation. One is in the kitchen.
Yeah.
That swings out into that corridor.
This is going into their kitchen.
Then they have the other one down at the bottom where the wood...
Yep, this is existing for them, their wood storage is here, so that's an existing door. They bring their wood in and out. And then what we're doing here is this will be a ramp, so that Dad can get into their house internally, without having to go outside and go around, because in the winter, that would be hard.
You didn't really get a chance to go out to Pickrell Pond or look, but obviously, and it sounds like we're dealing with a handicapped person here, so we don't have issues with cars and stuff, but you're taking away your parking in your garage, so they're going to be just parking outside from now on, or?
Yes, we have 55 acres, so parking's not going to be a major concern.
Okay.
And we have a barn, a 50 by 30 barn, that we can put vehicles in if we...
Okay, because just, you know, just a normal question, because...
Absolutely.
Once you have this apartment, you, you know, if in fact you decide that, or something happens to this person, you have the ability to rent it to somebody else, and then it becomes a car issue, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I understand, but I don't think it'll be a big issue. The closest dwelling of any kind to us is over 800 feet away, so we've got a lot of space.
Like we can accommodate it.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions at the moment?
Does this have anything to do with his? The one we're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, it's the one right here, this taken, put in the accessory apartment of the garage.
I'm just looking. I don't know if they... Yes, this is the house I saw. There's a bit of confusion on my part, I'm sorry to say.
Okay, yeah.
This is the building we're talking about?
I don't have my glasses.
Borrow mine.
He's looking at this page.
When I drove up yesterday, this is the house I saw.
Yeah.
That same place?
Yeah.
You drove down the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what, this reads as a roof, it's actually a deck. That's just a deck out back, and that's the garage, and...
Makes sense to me, you can see the...
It reads very bizarre.
Yeah, it looks different, huh?
Yeah.
I just, confusion on my part, so...
Yeah, it's a very weird photograph.
Yeah.
Because these right here, these little shadows, are these two dormers right here. So this roof is reading funky, like I don't quite understand it, like it's...
We also don't know what year that satellite image was taken from, so...
But that's, that's, there's a deck out, that's not part of, I mean, that's not, under this roof, that's the deck, but that's the, yeah.
I just wanted to be on the same page.
It is the same, it is the same, yes, yeah.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may sit down just for a minute.
Okay.
I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward and introduce yourself for the That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions?
Nope, looks good to me.
Any closing comments from the applicant? Ma'am?
No, we're all, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board discussion.
To me, it seems like completely reasonable use. It's in an area that doesn't impact anybody, and makes it better for the family.
And I think the code says add at least one parking space, so I think we got that covered for it, so...
I have no objections to this at all. I've looked over the requirements for the type of house. It seems to do all of them.
Okay, so with that in mind, like to, if there's no further discussion, like to entertain a motion?
I'm with the motion to approve the application 2018-0015 for a special exception for an accessory apartment at 61 Pickrell Pond Road, the size of the apartment not to exceed 668 square feet as presented to us tonight. The use requested is specifically authorized, accessory apartments are allowed. The use will not create undue traffic congestion or have any impact on pedestrian safety. The use will not affect any public water drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets. Requested use will not create any excessive demand for police fire schools or solid waste disposal services. There are no special provisions for this use in the chapter. The requested use will not create a hazard to health, safety, or general welfare of the public, nor will it be out of character with the neighborhood. There's certainly more than sufficient land on this parcel to accommodate this use, and that goes into the proposed location as appropriate for the requested use. It's an extension of the residential use in a residential area, and it's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Right.
That the record indicate it passes 5-0. Thank you, and y'all have a good night. Okay, moving right along. Application 2018-0016, 32 Lewis Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from the side setbacks in order to leave a shed in its current location. Would applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Abdi Ardhahali. We, in our garage, we have too many jet ski and lawnmower, so my wife was, we use a house as a, you know, vacation house, so every time we come up, she can park inside, so we, she got me a shed as a present. Sorry, we didn't know that we need to get a variance, we didn't get the permit, so we put the shed as far as we could at the end of the driveway, and by mistake, now we're here, we're looking for a variance to leave the shed where it is. It's not, it's two feet from the rear neighbor and three feet from our side neighbor. If we have to move the shed, it's going to take away the view of our neighbor, which Ms. Camille Bailey, she's present here, she has a nice view in her backyard of the Opech Lake, so the reason we put the shed all the way to the end of the driveway, so we're not blocking her view. So I'm asking the members to give us the variance to leave the shed where it is, it doesn't take away from value of either one of the properties. Mr. Landry is here, which is our neighbor to the end, and Ms. Camille Bailey. Shed is a, reads very shed, very well-made, looks good, and we took, we took, there was a car, unregistered car in the driveway, we took it away, so we're asking the board to give us the variance, to leave the shed where it is.
Okay. If I may ask, it looks like it's two feet from the side of the road. Is that actually from the side of the road, or is that just a...
That's two feet from the property line.
So my assumption is then there's another...
There is some distance from property line to actual edge of pavement, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how much, because we don't plot the pavement, but, yeah.
I was just more curious to make sure we're not sitting on the side of the road with a shed, without DPW having to look at it with a snowplow coming by.
Actually, it's, if I may, if you look at the road, Lewis Street is right here. This is the driveway, that goes all the way. If you look at, you should have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Louis is right here, so this is the driveway to our house, and the shed is part all the way, I mean, it's located all the way to the end, has, you know, you have at least, I want to say 100, 100 feet to the road.
But it's Edwood, Edgewood that I was concerned with, which runs side, beside the, Edgewood's right here by this.
Comes Louis, and then Edgewood curves, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was, the way this drawing here shows is Edwood.
Well, Edgewood runs this way, this is Louis.
And your shed is two feet, that's what I was trying to clarify, is how close to Edgewood is the actual shed?
It should not be there, that's not how it is.
I think, I think where, this showing Edgewood is misplaced.
Yes, it is.
Edgewood is more along the lake.
Yes.
Louis comes in, it curves, turns into Edgewood, and goes along the lake. So really, the shed is sitting on, is fronting on Louis.
Is the shed inside the fence?
Inside the fence? No, it's way in the back of the property line.
The picture is drawn wrong, we've just determined that.
Yeah.
The...
Oh, this is Edgewood, I thought this was Louis.
Where the shed is drawn is the driveway?
Where's Louis Street on this?
Do you have a copy of the picture?
No.
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 This is the...
See, I had looked at that, just this picture on there.
So this is the house, with the driveway.
Yep.
Shed is in the back here.
Oh.
The way it's drawn on the, that would put the shed here.
So it's actually back.
So it's not near the road at all.
Oh, okay.
Now, is that, does that sit on the pavement? Is the shed sitting on the pavement already?
Yes.
No? Yes? So it's already paved?
Already paved.
You put the shed on it?
Yes.
And the shed, I have to ask these dumb questions, it's not any kind of a living quarter or anything like that? It's strictly for storage, and it doesn't have electricity and all?
We're waiting to, for your approval, so we can move everything, but it's not for living space, it's just storing, so we can have the garage open, so we can park the cars in there.
Did this trigger a building permit because of the size?
It will.
Square footage of it?
It will.
All right.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? There being none at this time?
One question, I do, I have one. You said your neighbor doesn't object because of the view. Is your neighbor here tonight?
Yes, he is.
Both are here.
They will get an opportunity to speak. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'd like to, you may have a seat for a second. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Either or.
Either or.
Hi, my name is Robert Landry. I'm in the property 1059 North Main, which abuts Mr. Ardhahali's property to the north. It, I'm here to support him in his effort to achieve this waiver, because it doesn't impact me. Yes, it's close, closer than, I think it's 10 feet is the setback, but it doesn't obstruct my view, or anything of that sort.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Sure. Good evening.
My name is Camille Bailey. I am a neighbor of Abdi. I have no objection to the shed where it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, we're bringing it back to the board. Any other questions? There being none, any closing remarks? Any final remarks?
Well, no, I appreciate, the only thing I request the board because of Ms. Bailey, we consider her view, that was our main concern, to put the shed where it was, and we didn't know that we need to get the, you know, the permit, and we, you know, very concerned about if we have to move the shed, it's going to take her view, and she's got a nice porch with all the flowers and bird feeders, that she sits and watches the Opech, so, I appreciate.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
What is the exact size of the shed?
What was on the drawing is 12 by 18, which is going to, they'll have to have a permit. And I feel much better after seeing the photograph.
Yeah, it makes so much more sense.
It makes more sense to me than without, so I have less of concern, because I was more concerned about DPW coming by and taking that baby out, but it's not even close, no way to get to it, so. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I just, just comment on tight is tight, you know, when we get within these three feet, two feet setbacks, you know, anything that really gets... feet, two feet setbacks, you know, anything that really gets tight, I always get a little nervous, but it is what it is.
Okay. Yes, sir.
If I may, Chair, I would suggest to the board that if you approve this variance, that you put a condition on it, that they obtain a building permit.
Yeah.
Anything else, like to entertain a motion with a condition of a permit added to it? If it's in a.
I'll make a motion to approve application two zero one eight dash zero one six, thirty-two Lewis Street, for variance to leave the shed in the current location as placed at the end of their driveway. It's going to be three feet from the setback, is that?
Three feet from the side.
It's three feet from the side setback?
Right.
Is that it?
Two feet from the rear.
Okay, two feet from the rear. The shed was placed here to protect the view of the neighbor of, for Lake Opechik. It's not, contrary to the public interest, it affects the only two people, it truly affects only two abutters, both spoke in favor. The spirit of the ordinance is observed in that they have, they have come forward to request the per, the variance and are placing it in the best location possible on their lot to maintain, to maintain the value of the surrounding properties and not diminish those. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship, in that they would have to move the shed and it would impinge on the neighbor's view while view is not a governing factor in determining variance requests. This, this is very, this does come into play here, because it was specifically placed to benefit the abutter. The, the approval would be granted with the condition that it's a twelve by eighteen shed and it will require a building permit, and that it will be used for storage only.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion. That the record indicate it's approved five zero. Enjoy your shed, sir. Just remember, you gotta get a permit before you do anything further with it, okay? Okay, as we move right along, at the speed of light, seven thirty, doing great. Application two zero one eight dash zero zero one, zero zero one seven, two five four Pogus Park Road, with applicant, applicant is requesting a variance from the front, side, and shoreline setbacks, and to build a new structure that would be less non-conforming.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Patrick Wood of Patrick Wood Law Office, representing Mark Tadelman and Gail Tobegi Tadelman, who are the trustees of the two fifty-four Pogus Park Road Trust. I hope I pronounced that close.
Don't worry about it.
Close enough, all right. The, my clients would like to, basically as you've read, take down the existing structure that was built sometime around nineteen forty-five or forty-six and replace it with an, a new structure. And we're gonna go through some of those things, I'm going to, this is our first time using this device, so I'm going to see if we can't jump to parts of it.
Can you get it?
Come back to the memorandum.
There we go.
Getting there. Now, this is the existing conditions plan that shows the property as it currently is. The next page is the proposal. I wanna come back to these two. This is the original subdivision plan, it's the lower one of these, and it was lot fifty on that original subdivision, which is the second one from the left. This is a copy of the deed, the current deed for the property into their trust. We have received approval from the Department of Environmental Services to remove the existing house and replace it with the proposed house. That was received on June fifteen, I've attached a copy of that shoreline impact approval that is in your application. But I want to go to the pictures of the property first, because I think it'll be easier to understand some of the issues that we're talking about. Okay, this first picture shows the property from Pogus Park Road. There is, in addition to the house, there is a shed that is on the right, and that shed is entirely both within the front setback and substantially, if not entirely, within the side setback, and in fact, it's over the property line into the right of way for Pogus Park Road. But you can see the, the general configuration of the lot, it's a very narrow lot, it's only fifty feet wide, and this house is behind the tree. Let's say it was built in the nineteen forties. My clients have made substantial changes to it since they owned it in nineteen eighty-one, I believe was the time when they bought it. The next picture is again from Pogus Park Road, but this is moving a little bit further to the west. You can see the general layout of the house, I want you to note on the left of the house is the stone walkway and the deck as well. Also in the front is the paved parking area that currently exists. This is the front of the house from Pogus Bay. Perfectly comfortable house for the nineteen forties, fifties, and sixties. This is their dock, this is looking out into Pogus Bay. This is looking at the house from the dock. The property to the left is two fifty-eight Pogus Park Road. There is no plan to remove any of this vegetative buffer along that line, but you can see the, the deck in front of the house as well, and you can see its location. The shrubbery is pretty close to the lot line, if not on the lot line. Again, this is from the end of the dock looking at the property, and you can see to the right or to the west of their property is two forty-six, I believe two forty-six, Pogus Park Road, which is a three-story building, and just to the right of it, you can see a little bit of it, is a, a second building that's approximately the same size, that's in a condominium adjacent to it. This shows, again, looking at, my client's property is on the right, and on the left is the two fifty-eight Pogus Park Road. You can see the, the general size and configuration of that recently reconstructed house. This is another view of the two fifty-eight Pogus Park Road, which is the house to the east. You can see my client's shed on the left of this photograph, and see the white fence that divides the, the properties. Also note where their garage is, as close to Pogus Park Road as what we're proposing. Now, I want to go back to the initial picture. This is the garage on the, the neighboring property. So that's, gives you an idea of what the properties look like. This is a Google Map view. My client's property has the little red arrow pointing on the top of it. You can see to the west, ours is the larger houses, and to the east, pardon me?
It's north.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna talk about the, yeah. Anyway, it's a very large structure. Here is the tax map that shows my client's property highlighted in yellow. To the west are the two condominium units, and to the east is the house with the garage, the yellow house that we pointed out earlier. I want to go to the assessment cards very briefly. This is my client's property, their assessment card, is a picture of the house, very similar to the one that we were looking at earlier. The structure is assessed as a improvement value, approved value of forty-four thousand two hundred dollars. The house to the west, initially the two forty-six Pogus Park Road. If I can get to that page. But I had a picture of that house there. Nope. There. This is a picture of the property immediately to the west of my client's property. And the, this is part of a condominium. Those two units are part of a condominium, there's the other structure, those two structures are on one lot. And the total assessed values, we estimate the value, and this is based on just speculation, because it's not broken down, we estimate the value of those buildings to be at least a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars each. Here's the property to the east, the, the yellow building that we were showing in our pictures. That property is assessed, the value of the improvements on that property are one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. So you can see you've got a hundred and sixty-one, two buildings to the west, you've got a hundred and sixty-four, one building to the east, and you've got forty-six thousand dollars for my client's property. So what we're asking for, and we'll get back to the plan here, to show specifically what we have in mind. Under the existing, existing conditions plan, you can see the deck, and it showed on the pictures that we had, to the right of the property, and that deck is partially, or is substantial, I should say, within the fifty-foot setback from Pogus, Pogus Bay. A little bit of the existing house is within that fifty-foot setback, part of the north westerly corner. The, the house meets the side setback to the west, but it is within the ten-foot setback to the east. It's approximately eight point four feet at the northeasterly corner, and about six feet from the north, or the southeasterly corner. There is no garage, but you can see where the paved walkway was that we had shown on the photograph. The proposal is to replace the existing house with a new house that would be approximately in the same location as the existing house, and deck, and walkway, plus add a two-car The deck will be slightly, and I say very slightly, farther away from the water on the northeasterly side, or northwesterly side, but substantially the same as the existing deck. One major difference is, obviously, it's gonna be a two-story house, and there is a circular stairwell proposed that will reduce a little bit of that impact on that side. The easterly, or the westerly side of the house meets the side setback requirements. The southeasterly corner is a little bit closer by about four tenths of a foot, or about three inches or five inches closer to the lot line than the existing house, but it allows us to build a, a forty by forty structure in that location. As I say, the garage, a twenty by twenty-two foot garage.
Forty by thirty, not forty.
Forty by thirty, I'm sorry, I can't read my own notes here, forty by thirty, I was reading forty on both sides, I'm sorry, forty by thirty, thank you. It's very clear, it says thirty feet right there. The garage will be twenty by twenty-two, and it will be entirely within the, the front setback, but the driveway will, or the pavement will be taken up, that's there now, the concrete walkway will be removed, they will be replaced with porous pavers for the driveway, as you can see on the proposed conditions, the proposed plan, and the walkway down the side of the garage. The house will also have around the deck, or the, around the house and the garage drip edge, and also you'll notice in the upper corner, the northwest corner of the lot, there is a dry well area, that's to gather surface drainage, to hold it, and a retention area before it gets into the, the lake. So that, in addition to the drip edge, there is that dry well, those were conditions of approval made by the Department of Environmental Services. Now, I would like to get to the, the legal arguments that we have in favor of this. The, the property, as I've indicated, is a non-conforming lot. If it were to be subdivided today, it would have to be a hundred feet of frontage, and it only has fifty feet of frontage. It would have to be approximately ten thousand square feet, I believe, and it's only fifty-seven hundred square feet. So it's substantially less, both in frontage and in size, but the ordinance recognizes that non-conforming lots and structures may be replaced basically in kind if you can, and if you've improved the non-conformity, that's a plus. And we've done a little bit of the improving of the non-conformity, the lot coverage actually has gone down, even though we're adding a garage, and that's gone down because of the porous pavers substantially. We're also providing treatment for the surface drainage from the roof, both of the garage and the house, and the dry well. So even though we've increased. So even though we've increased the physical size of the footprint, the lot coverage has decreased because of that. So the first question is, will the variance variances that we are requesting be contrary to the public interest? And in order to look at that, you need to decide what's the essential character of the neighborhood, or will there be any threatened activity to the public health, safety, or welfare? I think from the photographs that you've seen, the properties on either side have been rebuilt and substantially enlarged. So what we're proposing, and we're going to look at those floor plans in just a few minutes, is well in keeping with what has been happening along Pogus Pogus Park Road. As you know, many of the houses along that have already been improved substantially. So the neighborhood isn't going to be affected by it. As far as the public health, welfare, and safety, that actually is going to be improved because we're taking a forty-five-year-old struc- or seventy-year structure, old structure, and replacing with a new structure with new electrical wiring, new plumbing, new energy efficiency, et cetera. So it's going to be a much safer structure in many respects. It has connection to the city sewer and Pogus Park Road. It has its own private water supply. So we're not affecting the sewer because it's an existing single-family residence, which is what it's going to continue to be. It doesn't affect city water because it has its own water supply. The spirit of the ordinance is observed to be contrary to the public interest, and these first three things, as the Supreme Court has said, are very much related. But in order to be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, it must be unduly and in a marked degree in conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the basic zoning objectives. Well, the basic zoning objective here is for single-family residential use. It's in the shoreline protection overlay district, and to the extent that overlay district requires us to do things, it basically is in keeping with what the state requires. We're not moving anything closer to the lake, we're keeping it exactly where it was. So we're complying with the standards of the overlay district. It's a safe, safer and healthier situation and providing greater protection for the lake by the water pollution controls that we've enacted or will enact. Substantial justice is done, and this is one that the gain to the per person is must be not outweighed by the gain to the public. And that doesn't mean you have to provide something for the public, but you just have to say that what's being done here is not going to harm the public interest. And in this case, it's going to be doing the opposite, it's taking an old home, updating it, bringing it up to current standards. The other plus is instead of having an open parking on Pogus Park Road, and I think we all know that there are issues there with parking on Pogus Pogus Park Road, there now will be a garage in which houses cars can be parked, which is a safer situation for the owners as well as the people using Pogus Park Road. The values of the surrounding property will not be diminished. I think we've looked at those with the assessment cards, we've seen what the assessments are on the neighboring properties. For their buildings, this is forty-six thousand dollars. It's unfortunately for my clients, the taxes will go up when they improve their house, but that's what they want. They want to have a nice house. They have, just as a personal note, this was a second home for them, it was their vacation home, but they have moved from Bedford to Laconia. This is their permanent home, and they want to make it their home for the rest of their lives. So they they have some real commitment to doing this the right way. The final issue is, is there any unnecessary hardship that would distinguish this property from another one, other ones in the area? Well, if you look just at the area, probably not much, but it's distinguishable in general because of the size of it, it's fifty-seven hundred square feet as compared to the ten thousand square foot requirement for the lot. Actually, it might even be larger than that, I think it might be twenty thousand square feet because it has only one municipal service. So it's substantially below the size, only fifty feet wide, so you would be left with basically a thirty-by-thirty-five-foot window in which you could build something. We're building a thirty-by-forty-foot house. It's as close as you can get to that thirty-by-thirty-five. And the other plus is that it's basically within the existing footprint of the house and the the walkway on the westerly side of the house. It's going to have a screened-in porch and a second-floor deck. So it's going to be, as I say, a better use of the property in many respects because of the garage and the safety issues by the garage, but also the capturing of the surface drainage. The lot coverage, the actual percentage is thirty-nine point three seven is what's there now. It will be thirty-eight point four seven after completion. We don't feel that there are any fair and substantial relationships in the ordinance that would say this should not be done. We think it's a reasonable use, and we think we've met the criteria. Now finally, I would like to jump, if I may, to the floor plans, because I think even though that's not something that you necessarily do get directly involved with, I think it's a reasonable thing for you to look at and see what is really being proposed. This first plan shows the the view of the house without the the face, if you will, and the height, it meets the height requirements of the ordinance, and I did check with Mr. Mora on that earlier. On the right-hand side of this is the, this is the foundation plan for the garage and the house. It shows on that lowest level, there will be a game room, storage, utility bath, and an office. And then here's a picture of what the lakeside will look like without the deck. This is the layout, the floor plans for the first floor and the second floor. First floor being on the right, second floor being on the left. And this is the depiction of what the house will look like. The picture on the upper left-hand side is a three-D picture, it's not to scale, but it gives you an idea of what this is going to look like. You can see the deck on the upper level, the screened-in porch below, and the circular stairwell coming down from the deck. This is on the upper right-hand side, the front elevation facing the water. And this is the side's view from the westerly side of the property. This is what it looks like on the easterly side and the rear, this is what the house will look like from the rear. So I think those are the issues that we have. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. Yes, sir, Mr. Foot.
I am, I'm just curious, when you speak of the well that's here, where is the well on this plot?
It, the well is shown, it's just a circular area on the plan.
You mean dry well or?
It's a dry well, but it's just a surface well, it's it's basically a retention area.
Oh.
Okay. It's shown as the dry well, and he's got a, there's a typical design of that on the plan.
Yep.
Okay.
Is, where do you guys get your water from?
From the lake, from the lake right now.
All right.
That may change.
And is it a public sewer?
Public sewer, it's on city sewer, yes.
Because it would be difficult to have a well with seventy-five feet of setback or whatever the requirements in Laconia are.
Well, that's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a state requirement of seventy-five feet. So if they're going to drill a well, they will have to get the appropriate easements or at least attempt to get the easements to do that. But since it's on city sewer, they have greater flexibility on where they could locate the well. Any other questions?
That area is a very, very congested area.
Yes.
And you're building on most of the lot, and you're putting a two-car garage in for the people who live in the home. What about people who visit? How are they, where where will they park?
Well.
It's no different than today. Today we have.
Yep, sir, this is Mr. Tettelman.
Mark Tettelman, two fifty-four Pogus Park Road. It's actually better today, we have a, you saw the paved area, you can only fit one car there. Besides that, you got to park on the street because we're not supposed to park on the railroad right away anymore. They don't have a ditch on our area, so theoretically.
I noticed that.
But if that ditch comes down, it's no different whether I build this or I don't build it. By building this, I have a two-car garage, and I probably could get two other cars in front of the garage, and possibly even drive on the pavers and park there. Okay, so it'll give, it's it's better and it's safer.
It's not a perfect situation.
I mean.
But we're dealing with a very small lot.
It's better than it is today.
And it's, if you remember the picture of the property to the east, where their garage is right up there as well, and they've got a paved area next to it where they're parking their boat. We don't want that paved area next to it, it's going to be.
You know, and as Pat mentioned, my wife and I could retire up here, live here full-time, and we need the garage, there's older people, you know, we don't want to be shoveling snow in the winter. Probably older than you. So, any other questions? You know, we try to stay within the existing plant. The house is actually forty-five feet long at the longest point. The part that juts out there is part of our bathroom shower. We're actually cutting down that to forty feet.
The existing house, right.
Yeah. And we're just taking the full width out to the end of the deck and the the walkway that we have, that's thirty feet. So we made it, we tried to conform and stay within that forty to thirty. It is the second smallest lot on the street, and it's really like fifty-one hundred square feet.
Yeah, okay.
It's small.
It is very small.
I think you answered most of the questions, and you probably anticipated them, I don't know, but we've had some problems up there with decks and being added after the effect and things like that.
Right.
And staircases coming down and extending beyond the deck, and I see you've done a pretty good job with that circular stairway.
Yep. Be aware of that, that, and that was the idea, to keep it within
Yeah.
the existing location of the deck, even the stairwell coming down, that's exactly where the deck is, and so it's not getting any closer to the lake than what was there. Right. I am, I am aware of that situation.
The, under the ordinance, the the coverage would be thirty percent. They're currently at thirty-nine point something percent.
Correct.
And the proposal would put them at thirty-eight point something percent. So they're they're gaining about one percent of green space. So I mean, it would be very difficult on a lot this size to have any structure of of any means that would conform to the seventy percent. So at least they're not doing more coverage, so.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Donna England, ninety-eight Pogus Park Road. I am for Gail and Mark to build this home. It's going to fit into the neighborhood amazing. And I mean, they're this tiny little cottage up against these two monstrosities on either side of her, and it's going to be beautiful, and it will definitely enhance the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Can I just say something as the owner?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Gail Tettelman. Neither one of my neighbors are here, but they're very excited about this opportunity for us to build up and improve the neighborhood. They, both sides support us wholeheartedly.
Thank you. And once again, if there's anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time, introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, I bring it back to the board for any further questions. Any closing comments? Is it a question?
Yeah, I know, a comment.
Or a comment? Is it a question or a comment? Is that something we can do in discussion?
Sure.
Okay. Closing comments. Okay, with that, I'll bring it to the, close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion and comments.
Okay. I think Mr. Woods did a really good job with this presentation. We've had some different problems down at Pogus Park, and you seem to have addressed just about every one of them, because I was prepared to ask you some questions, and you answered them before I asked, so.
It's our goal, thank you. Appreciate it.
I think this does cover a lot of the grounds that we have had. I have to admit, we've had quite exciting endeavors with. I think some are still going on. So I do appreciate the fact some people took advice from past histories and used those for their advantage and and.
I just want to thank Steve Smith, too, for doing a great job on it.
He always does. Yeah, he does.
And I think they did take a difficult piece of property and and maximize the use of it as best they could without overtaxing it so that it wouldn't stick out. I think it'll stick nicely within the neighborhood from the properties that are next to it and stuff. It kind of stuck out like David and Goliath there with the two mammoths on either side and the the house in the center, so I think I think it's worthy. So, anyway, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve application two thousand eighteen seventeen, two fifty-four Pogus Park Road, to remove an existing house and deck and replace it with a new house, deck and the two-car garage on approximately the same-sized lot. It's a forty-by-thirty of living structure and twenty-by-twenty-two-foot garage, which would be in the front setback. The granting the variance would be not be contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. The footprint of the new structure and porch is basically, as I said, substantially the same location as the existing house deck and patio. And the, and certain portions of the deck will actually be farther away from the shoreline. and the proposed garage will allow vehicles to be safely parked off the street and out of the right-of-way. And another plus is that a shed will be removed from the property. So again, the proposal does not violate any basic zoning objectives and does not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. And it's certainly within the spirit of the ordinance. Granting the variance will do substantial substantial justice. Again, it's consistent with the area's current use and character. And again, in this case, the benefit to the applicant is far outweighed by any negative impact to the general public, and certainly there will be no harm to abutters. Values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. I think that's pretty obvious. And unnecessary hardship, I think the hardship in this case is that these were smaller lots created previous to obso- created previous to zoning, and it would be impossible to meet current setbacks and put up any kind of a really livable, functional structure. It should also be noted that this is right on the lake, but they have obtained a permit, a shoreline permit from the state, which addresses all the environmental issues that we would otherwise look at, but they've been addressed, so there are no issues with that. And I guess that's it.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. Anything else to add to it? Nope. Okay. With that, I'd like to have a motion, all those in favor of the motion. Okay. It passes, enjoy your new home. Thank you very much. Get all your appropriate permits and enjoy.
Thank you.
Any other business before the board tonight?
No, sir.
I have a question.
Move you adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
Got a question?
Yeah, I got a question. Will this one come back around this sixteen Pickle Pond Road? Should I save this?
No.
No. It's all done. Any other questions? There being none, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Yay!
We adjourn.
Alright.